Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 28, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. We are pleased to have you with us this evening. Ms. Washington, could we please have a roll call?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Varhu.
Present.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. Mr. Servance. Mr. Weatherholtz.
Here.
And Ms. Washington.
So we have.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Standing, thank you very much. We now move on to item number three, Approval of Minutes of the July 24, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, do I have a motion, please?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Move unanimously. Any citizens who wish to address the board this evening concerning items on the agenda, we ask you to fill out our world famous green comment cards, please. And when you come to the lectern, please state your name and the address on the record. And let's remember that you have three minutes or less. If you can make your point other than that, that would be great. So moving smartly on to item number four A. Madam Secretary, if you would.
Item number four A. Five twelve Main Street Plan Development. Redevelopment P D R D. D E V 2025 dash two four one quasi judicial hearing.
Thank you very much. Hey, Dick Lee, how are you? Please.
Good evening. This item is a request to rezone approximately zero point zero, zero point zero three acres of property from redevelopment Beachside Specialty Retail, RDB two, to plan development redevelopment, P D R D, to allow a bar or lounge use in an existing building. The property is located at five twelve Main Street in the Main Street redevelopment area. The future land use on the property is pedestrian oriented uses. And the current zoning is RDB two and the proposed zoning is P D R D. And this is the aerial which shows that the property does have that existing building on it. So the property has an existing building, like I said, which was constructed in the 1920s and was most recently used as a retail space. The rezon request is to allow for a bar or lounge use on the property, which is not an allowable use in the existing RDB two zoning district. So the intent is to use that existing building and develop it as an upscale lounge environment. And the facade will also be improved to match the surrounding buildings on Main Street. As the property is in the Main Street redevelopment area, the rezon request is subject to review by the Beachside Redevelopment Board. So this is just the existing property survey. They don't have an actual PD plan because it's just this building on the property. And that is the existing facade and their proposed changes. And this is some render rates got from them of their interior renovations. And then they are asking for one waiver to modify the sign code, which limits the projecting or blade sign to 10 square feet in this zoning district. And they would like one that is 12 square feet. So as you can see on this proposed facade, that is their sign, which is about 12 square feet. And no other modifications or waivers, just one to allow this sign on their building. So the proposed rezon was on the agenda for the August 13, 2025 Beachside Redevelopment Board Meeting. However, there was not a quorum present for the item, so it was not presented by staff. So per section two point three point one of the land development code, if the redevelopment board does not have a quorum, their review is waived and the request can proceed to the planning board, which is you, and the city commission for review and action. So with that, staff recommends the planning board forward the rezon of approximately zero point zero three acres from redevelopment Beachside Specialty Retail, RDB two, to plan development redevelopment, P D R D, to the city commission with a recommendation of approval. A majority vote by the planning board members present in voting is required to recommend approval to the city commission. So I have that the tentatively scheduled city commission readings are October 1st and October 15th. However, the applicant has requested an expedited one, so that would make their first city commission reading September 18th, I believe. Is that the date? One of those days. And then the second reading would be October 1st instead. So these are just tentative dates, but it will be one of those two.
Very good.
And we'll find out, or Dennis will find out the exact date.
Seventeen.
Seventeen today is. Our wife's birthday, I should have known that. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Ms. Robinson, I see you pondering over there. You have a question? Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much. Great job. The applicant, and she smartly is coming up with her fancy looking raincoat on, avoiding the elements, very nice.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening for the record, Jessica Galloway, Call Pullah Farm, one Daytona Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. So my last day in this country before yesterday, well, not this country, the city, was the redevelopment board hearing for this item. I went to Scotland and Ireland for a bit, Charleston for a bit with the chamber, and now we're back. So I feel like no time has passed at all. I will be brief here. It was noted by staff that the redevelopment board did not have a quorum for our item, but there was some good discussion on this item. And while I will not characterize it as a vote from that board, individual members did voice some support, which we were thankful for. Overall, the renderings that you've seen for the exterior and the interior are conceptual design at this point, but the theming of the the main floors intended to be kind of an upscale cocktail lounge with some live soft music going. We did receive an email after the neighborhood meeting we had, which had great attendance, a lot of positive feedback you'll see in the summary. We had someone concerned about the hours of operation for music. It was originally drafted to match the hours of operation of the business, which, as you know, with an extended hours permit could go to 2:00 a.m. So we have restricted that to say any live music or entertainment on the site would stop at midnight, just so that they have that buffer. The upstairs is intended to be themed as an aeronautical theme to kind of speak to the Embry-Riddle students and give them a space in that core area that we have not seen to date. So the proposed operators are really excited and passionate about this use. We have them here if you have any questions. But otherwise, we are just adding that use and that two square feet to that sign for the blade sign, which we are intending to use instead of any wall signage. So it could have wall signage and that blade sign. We don't have any wall signage proposed, just that blade sign. And with that, here for any questions?
Okay, I have just a quandary. This cocktail lounge is going to be called Bam Bam's. And my question is, if they open up a second location, are they going to name it Pebbles?
So the Bam Bam's connection is a tie in to the proposed operator's name. It's a nickname, but I like the theming.
I just thought of throwing it out there. Any, any other questions for the applicant? Yes, please.
The balcony.
I think that balcony is just a decorative facade. I don't think it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
It won't be used, you know, given all the history of balconies and people overcrowding it and getting injured. It won't be used? Is that what you're saying? It's just decoration?
I don't know for certain. I think that it would have to undergo building review. So after the zoning, because they're redeveloping the entire inside, they'll do a structural report and see if there is capacity on that balcony, what it would be. But I don't know of any active plans for that space other than.
Yeah, because I'd be concerned about that, especially during some of the events when we have a lot of people and everybody's crowding in up there, you know? That's a danger waiting to happen.
And that's a smaller balcony for sure along the street.
I don't have a problem with the sign, you know, the two feet. I let it go this time, you know? But the balcony is what my concern is. And maybe you can express my concern or every, I don't know if anybody else has got any concern about that balcony.
It's a good point.
That it should not be, you know, accessible or used. I don't think it's structurally, it's been there since 19, what, 20?
The city would have to review that.
Yeah, during the, during the building permit process, they would have to demonstrate that it's engineered to be able to support anybody up there if they're planning on opening it up to the public. So they would have to go through that process.
The owner is here. Would you come to the microphone?
Please, please. Name and address for the record. Let's get it from the horse's mouth, why not? Good evening, thanks for coming.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Christian Bane, also known as Bam Bam.
Got it.
Nickname because of my last name. It's how it came to be my nickname because people mispronounce my last name all the time. Anyway, so the balcony has been added. It wasn't originally there, it was added and it has, it was structurally engineered. We have, there was an engineer that did it. All the wood and everything is brand new on it. And we plan on putting, there is currently an aluminum railing. We want to put a cast iron railing on there. So it'd be a much stronger railing. We have a sign that we have inside that says limit 10 people.
I was about to ask capacity.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we had, but really, I mean, it's built for, it's brand new. I mean, all the wood and everything is brand new and it's, it goes all the way into the inside of the building and it's, it's like really overbuilt, you know?
Now, are you going to monitor it to make sure that only 10 people? You know, it might sound like I'm being picky, but when you look at the news all across the nation and these balconies go on and it's a nice, you know, it's Bike Week and everybody's having fun and enjoying and going out there or, you know, New Year's Eve. And, you know, all of a sudden, you got 100 people on the balcony, just exaggerating. So that's my only concern, that there be some issues, some monitoring and some, you know?
It's pretty small, so I don't know if you're going to be able to fit more than 10 people out there, but we do plan on having the structural integrity of it, you know, tested or at least checked out by our G C before, and having it inspected by this code inspection.
The building official make the determination how capacity is in the railing.
Yeah, they're going to have to go through that process regardless of what's been done or hasn't been done up to now. But it's good to hear that you've kind of taken the bull by the horns and initiated the things that you have.
Actually, down the line too, I'd like to add that we have been kicking around adding an Asai Bar to Main Street at a second location, which would be called Pebbles.
And you guys were laughing when I brought it up earlier. Look at that, look at that. Thank you. Anything else for Jessica? Thank you, Jessica. Good to see you. We have one individual, Mr. Nicholson, that'd like to speak on this subject, and we're always glad to have him here to do so. You know the routine, sir.
Nicholson, 413 North Grabu Avenue. With regard to the balcony, there's a balcony on the left side of it, there's a balcony on the right side of it. And people have been on that balcony for years. So I don't anticipate a problem.
Gone through the balconies?
Not yet.
Okay.
All right. And I would hate to have it torn down. It's a unique feature and we need all the unique features we can get. Secondly, thirty semite years ago, we talked about unifying Main Street's zoning. Hollywood separates from industrial and entertainment. Have we gone anywhere with unifying the zoning on Main Street from river to ocean? It really should be one district. We really don't need automotive and all that kind of stuff. So that would be helpful. Secondly, we have, or did have, you have to be 500 feet from another liquor license to open up another, we need to get rid of that, all right? The hope of getting back Main Street to the quaint little 1920s is not going to happen, all right? I know there are people on Sadi, CRA that want their grandbabies to come and have a nice Sunday stroll down Main Street. It's not going to happen. We've got to allow this and any others that come along with great ideas in right to be able to do those without having to jump through hoops. Let them be creative and then come to you and say, hey, I got this great idea. And then you say yes, no, or maybe. But allow them to do it. Right now, we handcuff them and it prevents really great ideas. The CRA was created almost 40 years ago. I've been there 40 years and one building on Main Street came from the CRA, the old Red Barn. And that was 30 years ago. So you've done nothing for 30 years. You know, that CRA garnered, what, $5 million a year? And to be able to do only one building is asinine, all right? You go over the bridge, take a look on the left hand side, when we were using TIF funds, those buildings, those seven buildings are TIF funds. Sheila McKay came on the board and the right side is Sheila McKay, not a single property, all right? We have to start moving this. So I would ask you, one, to okay this, two, start changing the rules, unify it, allow them to do entertainment. We had an E-zone at one time. It's ideal for an E-zone.
Yep.
It should be a Bourbon Street. It should be a Duval Street. It is not cemetery. Please allow entertainment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. We have another speaker request as well, Greg Skoll. So thank you, please. Name and address for the record, if you would, Greg.
My name is Greg Skoll. I own the property of 504 Main Street, which is four buildings down to the west. I'm not sure that I'm opposed or in favor of this, but I am a little bit concerned. I bought the property from Mr. Cafferty. He's not here today. He was telling me about residential living upstairs and he actually showed me this unit that they're talking about. He was redoing it to residential upstairs. So I think this will take away residential upstairs if it's approved. So I'm a little bit concerned about if I update my property for residential upstairs, what does that do on the block? That's one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is I am developing the property and if you do this, then I wonder, do I have the ability to come in and ask for the same kind of change in the districting? So I think the real issue here is what is the message in Daytona Beach? It's getting a little bit unclear to me as I look around. And so that's why I'm here tonight. I think, I think we should encourage residential living downtown. It's going to get people to come down and live there. But if we limit the upstairs residential facilities, obviously they go away. So two things, residential upstairs living. What's this doing for planning if I go to develop my own property? I just wanted to bring that to your attention for consideration before you leave.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Greg. Anyone else like to speak for against on this item?
Did you get a slip from there?
I did.
Okay.
I did, thank you. With that, look for a motion on item four A, please.
Yeah, make a motion that we approve plan development redevelopment, P D R D, zoning D E V 2025 two forty one, five twelve Main Street, planning development.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Moving on to item four B. Madam Secretary, please.
Sure. Item four B, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University dorms and garage site plan. D E V 2025 dash two six four quasi judicial hearing.
Very good. Mr. O'Brien, how are you?
Good, good evening. William Ryan, senior planner.
Please.
So I just want to preface this item by saying that on page two of your staff report, there's a minor error in the existing use in the future land use designation. The existing use is AERU campus and surface parking lot. And the future land use designation is schools, just a minor mistake.
Thank you.
So this is item four B, AERU Residence Hall and Parking Garage, D E V 2025 two six four. This is a request by Parker Menschenberg of Parker Menschenberg Associates, Inc., on behalf of Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, to construct a six story classroom, office, and residence hall with 420 beds and approximately 45,000 square feet of classroom, office, and meeting space, which is a total of approximately 270,000 square feet, plus a six story parking garage with 925 spaces totaling 578,892 square feet, along with associated site improvements. This is the site location. It is situated within the Embry-Riddle Campus, lying east of Aerospace Boulevard, between existing dorms to the north and the College of Business to the south. The yellow area is the project area. The future land use designation is schools. The zoning is plan development in general. The existing use is again Embry-Riddle Campus and Parking Lot, and this is an aerial view of the existing conditions. So a little project history and background. So in 2013, the Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University PD was approved. The site is situated within the Embry-Riddle Campus on the east side of Aerospace Boulevard again, and consists of approximately 3.86 acres. The site currently features a surface parking lot, two dry retention areas, and associated landscaping. The proposed project includes a six story classroom, office, and residence hall with 420 beds and classrooms, office, and meeting space, along with a six story parking garage, providing 925 parking spaces. The total building area is 578,892 square feet, including associated surface parking, drainage, utilities, landscaping, and irrigation. The existing units, which is beds in this case, is 3,391. The proposed units with this project is 420 beds and the net total for the campus is now, with this proposal, 3,811 beds. So this is the parking breakdown. The first section there is the parking required. So that's 287 spaces. The next row is existing parking to be removed, which is the surface, the existing surface parking lot, 434 spaces. With the removed spaces and the required spaces, it's cumulative of 721 spaces needed. The proposed parking is 1,056 spaces and there is a surplus parking provided with this project of 335 spaces. So they're gaining more parking out there. This is the proposed site plan. This is the proposed landscape plan. This is the proposed overall west elevations and the overall south elevations. The overall east elevation and the overall north elevation. With that, staff recommends approval of the Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University Residence Hall and Parking Garage, major site plan application to develop a six story classroom, office, residence hall, parking garage, and associated site improvements. A majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to approve the site plan.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, let's bring up the, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Please do.
Excuse me. I have tried my best to put the dormitory and the parking garage on the property over there. Where actually are those two facilities going? Can you explain the land, the land plot where it's going? I mean.
One goes relative to the other, yeah.
Yeah, so there's an existing surface parking lot to the north, there's some existing dorms, Aerospace.
What street is it?
Aerospace Boulevard.
Okay.
So that's the internal road that goes between basically the airport and the campus. So if you're coming off Clyde Morris, it'd be going west into the campus.
So Kathy, if you take a look at the picture up there.
I looked at that building to the pink, I mean, that yellow building.
Yeah, it's all the way in the back. It's up against the back property by the, by the airport. So it's right adjacent to the airport property, but it is back behind what I call the birdcage property, that student property, it's back even behind that, so.
And is that street, plus that street?
So it's Aerospace Boulevard to the west there. And then the campus itself is situated, or this side of the campus is situated between Clyde Morris and Aerospace Boulevard. So you have the College of Business to the south, you have existing dorms to the north. And then, as Dennis said, I believe it's the Student Union and things of that nature to the, to the east.
On the far west side of the property.
Is that near?
Away from Clyde Morris.
It's away from Clyde.
Away from Clyde Morris. You see Clyde Morris is up there.
That's what I've been trying to pull out.
Yeah.
Away from Clyde Morris. Okay.
All right.
Gotcha.
All right. Good, thank you.
It gets kind of hectic back there on Clyde Morris.
Well, Parker, Emery Little's doing some stuff, aren't they?
Oh, yeah.
Wow, wow.
Parker Menschenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. You know, I'm always humbled when I get to do Embry-Riddle's work and this one's pretty cool. It's got a six story parking garage surrounded by 420 bed dorm and, you know, Embry-Riddle's doing great.
Fantastic.
Real nice building, landscaping like they always do, so I think everybody'd be real proud of it once it gets built. They want to start it right away.
I can imagine.
And having that parking garage is going to be some really needed parking. It's always difficult on a college campus.
We did one a couple of years ago at the south side and it wasn't as big as this one, but yeah.
Fantastic. Any other questions?
Yeah, a question.
Please.
Or comment, pretty much.
Please.
It's always amazing, some of the building, the designs, you do an excellent job out there, definitely. My quick question for you is that it's real close to the taxi when takeoff there? Has that been approved?
Yeah. There are these contour maps, contour maps that, you know, the FAA and the airport provide. And so before we ever think about, you know, doing architecture, we make sure that we're not in the flight path. So this one is kind of to the left of it and low enough. So I'm not sure we have the FAA permit yet, but we will get it. There's no issues with it.
Yeah.
I did get the St. John's permit today.
There you go. Progress, progress. Anything else for Parker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We do not have any questions for the applicant unless someone wants to come up and speak for or against on this item. Seeing done, I would ask for a motion on item four B, please.
Make a motion that we approve major site plan, D E V 2025 two sixty four Embry-Riddle Residential Hall and Parking Garage.
Do you have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Moving forward to item four C. Madam Secretary, please.
Moving right along.
Yes, ma'am.
Item four C, auditorium and theater standards, land development code, text amendment, D E V, 2025 dash four five eight legislative hearing.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. Dennis, is this going to be, you're going to carry the ball in this one?
It'll be me, yes.
Okay, please.
Dennis Merser, Planning Director with the city. This is a request by the Planning Division on behalf of the Redevelopment and Neighborhood Services Division, so the redevelopment department, to amend the land development code table in the redevelopment districts to add auditorium or theater uses to the R D D one and R D D two zoning districts. Also to amend the use specific standards to add general standards for all auditorium and theater uses. And section 11, which is definitions, to add a definition for live entertainment and to slightly modify the definitions for auditorium and theater or theater and nightclub. So the, the first was to add the R D D or the uses, the auditorium or theater uses to the R D D one and R D D two. That's, you see, the table for the redevelopment districts will be modified to do so. The use is already permitted in the R D B eight, the R D M one, and the R D M four. The R D D or the downtown development district is the only district that did not permit the auditorium and theater uses, and this would allow that. Give you an idea where those uses are located. Most of the R D D one is located along Beach Street, fronting Beach Street. The R D D two essentially is going to be fronting, the property fronting Palmetto. So it just gives the opportunity for those uses in those areas. So it just gives the opportunity for those uses in those areas. In addition to the adding the use, we wanted to add use-specific standards. These standards are, really, a lot of our uses in the city have specific requirements if they're going to be doing a use. We did not have any standards in place other than the standard Land Development Code requirements, so we wanted to add some very specific standards for all auditorium and theater uses in the city. So this will be going into the L D C. First one, performances related to the display of specified sexual activities or nudity are classified as adult theater uses and are prohibited. This removes any question of whether or not this can be used for an adult entertainment use. It cannot. So it's just a straight auditorium and theater uses. The performances mustn't be, must occur within the enclosed building. A stage or designated performance area is required. The sales of preparation and service of food is a permitted accessory use. It's not a requirement, but if they wanted to do that, we just want to be very clear that they can do that as an accessory use. Sale in service of beer and wine, a two-cop or a consumption on premises license would be required, but if they wanted to do that, it could also be a permitted accessory use. The hours of operation from 9:00 a.m. to midnight, they would not be permitted to operate after midnight. And dance floors, dance spaces would be prohibited. We want to make sure that we're not, this doesn't get converted into any kind of a nightclub. We want to make sure we're very specific that it's just an auditorium and theater use. So we made a couple of minor tweaks to the definitions. First one, the auditorium and theater use, we just clarified the live entertainment, removing the performances, because we're adding a definition for live entertainment. And then, again, we're reiterating with the auditorium and theater uses that this is not for adult uses. This is, so that any adult uses would be prohibited for this particular use. Nightclub, just a minor tweak to nightclub. Added late night because it's a nightclub, and that's how nightclubs operate. We removed comedic performances. There was some question that keeps coming up of whether or not only comedy club would be permitted in a nightclub, and that's not the case. So a comedy club actually can go in other areas, including the auditorium and theater use. And finally, the last addition was creating a definition for live entertainment. Entertainment provided by one or more live performers, including musical, theatrical, dance, comedy acts directly to a live audience. We use the term live entertainment a couple of times in our Land Development Code. We didn't have a definition for it. Thought it'd be a great idea just to make sure there's a definition, so we all know what we're talking about. So with that, staff does recommend approval to amend the Land Development Code to add auditorium and theater uses to the R D D 1 and R D D 2 zoning districts, add use-specific standards for all auditorium and theater uses, and modify existing definitions for auditorium or theater and nightclub uses, and to add that definition of the live entertainment. Majority vote by the planning board members present, and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission, and the item is anticipated, heard by the City Commission for first reading October 1st, second reading October 15th, 2025. And as I mentioned, this was something that was generated from the Redevelopment Department. They had a, they had somebody come in and apply for an application. They want to do a comedy club on Beach Street, and they thought it'd be a great location to be able to do some of that, and it's an area that actually is set up to be able to do these types of performances. So we took a look at this, and they said, you know what? This is something we'd actually like to expand in other areas, too, so we wanted to add it to the Land Development Code. So with that, that'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dennis. Let me just ask a quick question about removing comedic performances. If you leave it in, doesn't that mean that could be one of many choices that a nightclub could have?
It does. You know, the problem was, there was, some people were looking at that, saying, well, it's only listed there, so that's the only place you can do it. So it was, I said, you know what? Let's clear it up. Let's, we're going to remove it from that, and it'll be, if it's a use that is generally accessory to that use, this is to say that a nightclub could still do a comedic performance over there, but we wanted to remove any ambiguity to that. If the board's more comfortable keeping that in, we're okay with keeping that in as well.
You're saying, in removing it, it's spreading it out to all the...
Yeah, we're saying that we can do, yes, we can do it at other...
We're not going to specifically target it.
Yeah, any place where you might be able to have a place of assembly might be able to do this as an accessory use, so.
Okay.
Is there anything planned for that area? I mean, it's on the books, questioning?
For which area?
For the area that we're talking about.
With the R D D 1 or the R D D 2?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's nothing on the books to be developed. This particular use that the Redevelopment Department was looking at is an existing building with an existing facility that would be able to meet those requirements. This is a small venue, but it was something that'd be able to work for comedic performances. You know, there is, if, Joe, if you guys can pull up that map again. The, you see the map of the R D D 1, R D D 2, and then you see kind of a gap between Speedway and Bay Street. Most of that property is actually zone plan development, and that's the Burgoyne Building, which is a mixed-use development that can occur over at that location. So it doesn't, this R D D 1, R D D 2 doesn't impact that property. They still have their P D that they're operating with and all of the uses that are permitted.
They had something similar to that, the Daytona Theater that used to be on Beach Street. When it closed down, they did, then went into comedic shows and things like that for a while.
Were they doing, was it like a nightclub there, too? Yeah, and that, I think that was a concern, and that's why they kind of, they said, well, we don't want necessarily that use, that nightclub use, but this kind of removes that, so it protects us so that we're not going to be having that nightclub use down there.
Good.
Okay. Anything else for Dennis, guys? And Cal? Okay. Moving forward then, if we have no speakers on this item, I believe we do not, unless there's anyone like to come up and speak for or against this item. If seeing none, ask for a motion for item 4C, please.
Yes, make a motion that we approve Land Development Code Text Amendment, D E V 2025-458, to add auditorium and theater use to the R D D 1, R D D 2 zoning district, modifying use-specific standards and definitions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Second, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Thank you very much. Moving forward on to item 5A. Any discussion from the Downtown Board? Mr. Vernon?
Yes, I'd like to submit this. Amy Powell, chairperson of the board, they, they were talking about parking and everything. I'd like to pass that on to you. I think they had some really good comments on parking doing different ventures.
We can make a copy of that and distribute that to all of the board members.
I think that would be a good idea. They had a lot of discussion on it, and I thought it was pretty interesting.
All right, well, thank you. Glad, again, we appreciate that you stepped up to volunteer your time on that board. Thank you. Very much appreciate it.
We'll email it to you, so we'll make a copy and email it to you.
All right, very good. Moving forward then, Midtown, any report?
No.
Hearing none. Beachside? Hearing none. Affordable Housing, we have, had a meeting last week. There was a presentation on the Sunshine Law. I think it was like my 516th time hearing about the Sunshine Law, but you always learn something new, so it was actually very well done. And there was discussion regarding, for the Affordable Housing Board, there are two reports that are obligated to be pushed, pushed out of that board annually. One's the annual ship report for 2526, and one is the incentive review and recommendation report. They call it the IRRR, where it talks about what priorities are going to be set, what monies are available, they will pay for those priorities, and if we have any, anything that we see as a priority that's not being funded, is there an opportunity to look for funding in some of these areas? So I'll have a little more to share with you folks at our October meeting. That's really where the rubber meets the road, the last meeting before the end of the year, and those reports need to be done. So with that, moving forward to item 5E, public comment. We do have one green form, and that would be our friend, Mr. Nicholson. Come on up, sir.
Jonathan 413 North Avenue Avenue. I understand that you don't consider landscape as a priority on what you look at, but what you require in terms of landscaping creates an ugly aftereffect for those of us on Beachside and virtually the entire city. You require X amount of landscaping, and invariably, within six months to a year, the landscaping that we require, that $200,000, $300,000, is now gone, all right? And all you get is weeds and garbage, all right? Is there a way of looking at your requirement instead of putting so many bushes per four, et cetera, cleaning it up? Because what happens is they put it in there, the weeds grow in, they don't take care of it, and it looks ugly. Whereas if it was just grass, or a paving, or some other kind of decorative landscaping that doesn't require a lot of maintenance, it will look more attractive for a longer period of time, all right? That's happening an awful lot. Secondly, the trees that you're requiring that go in, have you all thought about putting in trees that, because I talked to our friend Jenny Naisak, one of the big problems with flooding is that we take away the trees, which absorb the water. Now, South Florida put in Australian pines and papyrus, which became nuisance plants, but they absorb the water. There are natural plants to Florida that absorb water. I'm asking you to think about requiring those plants in those areas in which there's going to be flooding, all right? There's projects going in, I think, off Center Street or whatever, some townhouses. If they were going to add trees, let them add trees that will absorb the maximum amount of water. If we have that knowledge, we might as well use it. Parking in Main Street area, all right? Stacy Cantor doesn't care. Pave over everything, all right? One of the problems of Main Street is, we need, the buildings that were torn down rebuilt, or something put in its place. We have five locations, because the part of CRA is to accumulate properties to make it easier for a developer to just come in and build. We've done that. We've got five large properties. We have yet to put out an RFP. It's only been 20 some odd years, but the city's getting around to it. I'm being told we will get a CRA out soon. The CRA ends in 12 years, so it will be before 12 years, hopefully. But yeah, we can't pave over everything, because what's going to happen is, once you pave it and they make money, they're not going to develop it, all right? And we see that on Main Street itself. They do that thing, so be careful when you do the paving of CRA area. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any, if anyone else would like to speak for, or on any item, to front of the planning board, if there's none, so we'll move to staff.
I think it, a comment what John said.
Oh, go right ahead.
I think John's absolutely right. But the biggest thing, you know, when we require landscaping on any structure or any parking lot, it's up to the owner that puts it in to maintain it. Now, is it, you know, what John's saying, is they're not maintaining it, you know, in the right of way? Because if they're required to put anything in, whether it's in the right of way, or on their property, or whatever, whatever the city requires, they're required to take care of it. Water it, mow it, weed it, 100%, and if they're not...
The question is, can we demand that?
Absolutely. You definitely can demand that.
Yeah, there are maintenance requirements. They have to comply with a site plan, a landscaping plan is part of a site plan, so they have to comply with that. If they, if the landscaping dies, they're required to replace the landing to the site plan standard, and then it becomes a code enforcement issue, and then code enforcement does what they do to get them to come in.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, you know, as far as the selection of plants, you know, everybody that builds something, they want to put a palm tree in. You know, I mean, and palms are great, you know, Florida, you know, whatever, but I think that there is a lot of variety that the city can, should make a list, and, you know, what they put in, something that's, I don't know about absorbing the moisture, but anything that's a green area, I think, is really good. You know, they, they put in bark, they do everything, grass will absorb water, it's easier to maintain, and I think that the city, it's up to the obligation of the city, when they submit a set of plans for the landscaping, and just like the architecture and everything, to make some recommendations that the city would want them to put in, and that would be beneficial to, I think, to everyone. And needless to say, you want to put something in, it's not too hard to maintain.
Yeah.
You know, you've got to be reasonable. But I think that would be very good for the city, the landscaping and everything, to put recommendations in.
I can, I can tell you that Dana Lee does most of the landscape reviews, and Dana Lee is very adamant about the type of landscaping, and she is very involved in the landscaping plans when they come in. Dana Lee also just came to me recently, there's going to be a class, an arborist class, a master arborist class, and she wants to take that class, and she's going to be doing that. So it'll be interesting to see what she learns, and maybe we can take some of that, then bring it back and put it into the Land Development Code of what might be appropriate for certain locations, so.
Great.
We're excited about that.
Any other discussions on this topic? Seeing none, moving on. I know, Dennis, you had some discussions about some changes in our ethics CE requirements.
Yeah, the City Commission at the August 6th meeting approved a resolution amending the policy on ethics training for board members. As you, as you might be aware, you were previously required to do a four-hour ethics training every year. The policy has been changed to only require the four-hour ethics training upon appointment or reappointment, so it'll be down to once every four years, so.
Yay.
Saves you a little time there, so.
Freedom, yeah.
So that's it. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, and before we conclude, just wanted to say that we had Josephine Callis with us for a few months. She's moving on to be on another board, and just wanted to thank her for her participation on this one. We look forward to her doing good things on the, on her next steps and what she wants to do. With that, seeing no other business to be held, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.